All right, it is 9:47 a.m., July 23rd. We will open up this public budget works out, put this stuff with it. Let the bleeding begin.
After discussions, I'm just going to make a pop for John at his office where he hands that. After discussions with Commissioner Paulson and Judge, it was related to me to prepare a budget that was absent of just everything's capital outlay request wise, except those things that obviously were non-discretionary, which is if you look at the list that provides, you have crossed out everything.
Something hadn't come there with you. Never mind.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I was watching Netflix.
That's all right.
The only things that have remained were the things that this court has already agreed to. Obviously, the Zerker software contract balance, we're under contractual obligation to pay that. The TASER payment, we have again a contractual obligation for $4,100 for that. And then this court has already approved the purchase and issued a purchase order to take delivery next fiscal year of three Ford F-150 vehicles. That is on the sheriff's office. And then at the golf course, we have our fifth and final payment on the golf carts that will be due in November. And then I have left, I have left the IT things there. And the reason I've left that is twofold. The judge and I actually had a meeting with him, is it today?
11 a.m. tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, where we can kind of hone that down. And his budget is countywide. And so, you know, if there is a computer failure, if there is a network failure, and so, you know, just for reasonableness, we've got to keep some money there. We can't just not have our computer network. So, I've left those amounts there. I still think 80 may be a little high. So there may be some paring down, but I don't think it's going to be cut in half. That stuff is just expensive when it talks about that. The other thing this budget version has is that we also put in new employment numbers showing a 2% increase given to the employees across the board as well as elected. I also prepared you the schedule for the elective, proposed elected salaries. And you can see that sheet changed nothing in the travel allowances. And in the case of the, for those elected officials that receive state supplements, that 2% is only calculated on the county's portion, not on the state portion. So, and so there you have the total proposed salary amounts for those particular folks. And those are already populated in your version of budget.
So, the total on page 27, total expenditures, that includes everybody?
Yes, sir.
That's elected, hourly, department heads, everybody?
Yes, sir. All of that has been populated.
Okay.
So, if we start with that, in fact, let's also talk about tax for just a second, because everybody likes to talk about tax. We got our final numbers in. The certified, the certified number still has some potential adjustments for protesting those folks that are still in the time period for filing appeals. But our numbers came in at 2,255,266, which obviously compared to our preliminary numbers is better. We had some upticks on some minerals, and he's been successful in some of the protests.
Two billion.
Two bi-, what did I say?
Two million.
I apologize. Yeah, I'm just not used to saying that before. I apologize. Two billion. If I was in Washington, I would, you know, I'd confuse it. But two billion, 255,266,017. Now, with that, I've updated our rate structure. If you can see here, the prior year rate, 46159, the proposed rate, which is what we, the budget is proposing right now to be balanced, showing zero deficit spending is .49014, which is a necessary increase of 2.8 cents and change. Our effective rate became .46745, and the rollback rate is .50485126, taking it out that many different places for accuracy purposes. And then you can see your options there. And with the tax calculated to the right there, you can see that a one cent increase nets you a tax of 10,000,635,609, a two cent increase, a three cent increase. And then I've colored the four cent increase red simply because that is over the rollback rate. So, four cents is not, is not available to you. And that, you know, and distance aside and trying to avoid political conflict as much as I do, which is not very often, you know, this is the main reason why it's important that we are actively opposing Senator Bettencourt's and Lieutenant Governor Patrick's.
And Senator Burwell.
And Senator Burwell, proposed property tax reform. You know, had this, had they been successful two years ago, we would, we would not even be able to do the two cent.
1.6 wasn't that about the most we could have?
Yes, sir. So, you can see how they're painting us into a corner and leaving themselves wide open on school tax. Now, you know, I'd be in favor of a 4% if it was across the board, if schools would also adhere to that. But the fact that they're applying that, or they're wanting to put that 4% on everybody except the schools, which is the only tax rate they control, is a little bit disingenuous to consider property tax reform, especially when you look at your property tax bill and you see the school taxes, the majority cost on that bill. So, anyway, that's my political moment for this morning. But anyway, while we are in the 8% constitutional limits, we can go up to 3 cents and change on that, but that would be our max to the .5048. So, what we're recommending is the .490414. And that's where we can start our discussions in the actual worksheet budget that I gave to you. You can see, well, let me get this so it makes better sense. You can see the different line items that we're proposing. I've had to make some reductions based upon historical. I've been, I've been trying to pare back our revenues to being actual. It's, you know, it's one thing that, for me, to throw a, you know, a $30,000, for instance, on county clerk fees, you know, but historically, it's been 17. So, I've got to make sure that I'm, you know, I'm just not throwing 30 in there to balance it. So I'm paring it down, dropping from 30 to 25 until we find that spot. You know, auto registrations, unless we have a huge influx of people moving in, registering their vehicles, we're going to be about the same each year on that, same on road and bridge fees they're collecting on the renewals. This is one that I've gone up on. Landfill, obviously, we're starting to see, because of the things we just talked about, we're starting to see some of those checks come in. And now, some of the checks include not only the amounts that are collected for the brush, but also the amounts collected for tires. But we're going to have the disposal fee that we're going to have to pay when we haul those tires away. So, the net, I've put about 45,000 is what I'm thinking we'll probably achieve from just the brush minus the tires. County courts, our judge has been not too good about collecting, so, you know, I'm having to drop him about 10 grand.
Trying to see how far I go, huh?
Yeah, we'll see with the bottom. Well, it's the judge and the county attorney.
There you go. He's out here defending, so.
Mostly the county attorney.
All right, thank you, thank you.
My bosses, the district judges, are not much better. We're dropping them down some. And then the good news is, if you were, when you get down to the JPs, they are, they are actually doing quite well. I'm bumping them up. I think this is the result of us having four highway patrolmen in the county now. They're doing a land office business, and it's being, it's being evidenced by the collections in the JP court. The interest income, I've boosted up because the market has taken quite a bit turn for us. So, as you can see, interest income, in fact, as of the last financial statement I gave to you gentlemen, give me a moment here. Interest income for this particular year is at 142,558. So, that's only on the general fund items. That excludes golf course, that excludes all the other special, any type of special revenue funds that are also collecting interest. This is just on the general fund items. So, I really think that interest income has, after several years of being just a bit player in our, in our budget, is actually coming back to be there. The other thing that I think is interesting to notice as well is right here, EMS ambulance fees. Because we have added another crew and are doing the transfers and things of that nature, we're actually seeing those numbers increase, which is what we had anticipated because we had, obviously, had added extra expense to that line item in order to serve our citizens better. And so, with that extra expense, we were anticipating extra revenue, and sure enough, right now, we seem to be averaging about 30,000 a month in collections on EMS. So, I'm giving them a reasonable conservative amount there. I booked 200,000 on sale of fixed assets. This is probably my only shot in the dark number, to be quite honest with you. We have a judge who, in a court that really likes to get rid of some of our assets, and that's good. I'm all for that. We obviously have got a building that we're under contract to sell right now. Don't know when that will sell. I'd much rather come in and tell you that, you know, we've collected more because of what I anticipated than to collect less. So, I'm keeping the 200 there. That is probably my only quote-unquote fudge figure. If we don't have really any big asset sales, that number will not be achieved next year at all. So, just FYI there. I want to go on the record and let you know that that's a, that's a number that I really, that's the only one that's really kind of a phantom number there that could or should not materialize.
And the other thing we have in here that we didn't have in the past is 95,000. Put a lot across the street.
Correct. And that's, that's down the expense side.
Right, right.
Sorry. No, you're absolutely correct. We certainly can go through department by department.
When you go to four, go back to the top.
Yes, sir.
And see what your proposed.
Total revenue or tax?
No, back all the way to the top. That 49 cents, what's it going to create in taxes?
110%, collections, 11,060. Oh, excuse me, 11,060,145.
Commas give me trouble.
Say, Kenner, can you control this picture?
Okay.
Very tough.
All right.
It's got the proposed tax.
Since we can't see the screen.
You have to look around to find it.
I can increase it a little.
No, we got it, we got it here.
Yeah, it's here. Okay.
So, your proposed revenue is the same as our budget?
Yes, sir. So, it's a balanced budget.
How'd that come out?
Sir?
How did that come out exactly?
Well, because I made the tax rate to be exactly what we needed to balance the budget. You know, assuming that, that we wanted to walk into this with revenues equal expenditures, or expenditures equal revenues, either way you say it, that we weren't going to be doing any type of budgeted spending of our reserve balance. We certainly can go through department by department. I don't want to waste your time. I'll highlight some of the several departments that have some changes there. One of the things, if we look down into the CAD section, we actually have a little bit of a cost savings there from what we had last year. That's department number 407. And when I say last year, means our current year right now. Our share was 195,600. Based upon the budget, it's dropped to 178,979. So that is, that is really good. I always like to see any type of reduction that we can achieve there. Also, if we go down towards the bottom, probably two of the biggest things of note to look at is, when I say the bottom, I'm talking about. So, going to the bottom, talking about we're going to get down to 450. We have got, like we talked about last time, I've increased our security line item from 25,000 to 50,000 so that we can start implementing some of these security things to this building. Also have, like the judge said, $95,000 in there to complete the lot purchase that we're under contract for. And then also, we still have 100,000 budget there for other capital improvements here at the annex. The other thing that's of note, if you'll notice there in section 950, we've reduced the subsidy to both the golf course and the expo from 250 down to 200 each. So, that drops from 500,000 to 400,000. So, our total budget is just a little bit over 13 million dollars, or 13,011,945 as this budget stands right now. The, and that's achieved with that tax rate of the 2.8 cents.
At what?
A 2.8 cents increase.
2.8 pennies.
It's actually, here's that number right there. That's the increase. 8824. And then the other thing that I'll make mention of too is that we talked about this at one time. We actually received a reduction, proposed reduction. Currently, our rate at TC DRS is 15.92%. TC DRS has informed us that our rate is 15.44. And we've had this discussion before, that TC DRS uses a calendar year, where we use a fiscal year, so we have a blended rate because we have, we still have to pay October through December at the 2018 rates, and then we get to pay January through September at 2019 rates, a 15.56%. And this budget recommends actually keeping the elected rate, which was last year's, was the rate that we're paying right now, a 15.79. And the reason is, we're trying to eliminate this unfunded pension number. If you can see, at the end of 2017, TC DRS informed us that unfunded number became 4, 359,319. So, you know, their plan, and when they set the rate, their plan is for that number to be retired in a 20-year amortization, assuming nothing changes. Assuming, and those assumptions are quite huge, because number one, it assumes that their investments won't make 8% in the market. Well, we all lived through 2008 through 2012, where 8% was a pipe dream to achieve in the market.
And not trying to pass blame, but at the same time, if you notice seven, eight, nine, and 10 up there, we're paying for the sins of the past.
That's correct. They, you're paying for these COLA increases for the retirees, 30% '07, 30% '08, 30% '09, and then a 50% in 10.
At the same time, the economy was tanking.
Correct. And, and as you can see, you know, that we started before that first COLA, we started at an unfunded pension in '06 of just a little bit over a million dollars. And since '06 to '17, it has, it has quadrupled. And, you know, TC DRS, one of my, one of my issues with them is, I mean, they've got a great sales tool, because they come in and say, "You guys can do this, this, and this, and it won't change your rate." Well, yes, that's true. It's not going to change your rate right now.
You got to fund it.
But it will change your rate in the coming years. And so, you know, every time this court does something, a buyback, a COLA, something, it affects this number. And, and, you know, I don't want to panic anybody. I mean, we've got a, our retirement plan is in excess of 31 million, 31 million dollars sitting there in the, in the fund that's actually funded. But, you know, again, their assumption is if everybody retired, everybody lived to be 82.7 years old and collected all their money and all that kind of stuff, our funds would be 4.3 million dollars shy. So, I'm trying to attack that a little bit, too. And by electing that little bit higher rate, even, even just little, has long-term impact. So, since we've already, we've already been kind of stomaching that 15, 1579 number, I recommend we keep it there so that maybe in a year when we're really having to grasp for straws, we might have to take the blended rate for here, too. But let's kind of, let's kind of attack this unfunded liability a little bit, too.
Get it back down, man.
It's just a, for me, it's an uncomfortable number. I just don't like.
Hanging over your head for 20 years.
It is. It's a liability, for sure. And so, just like any other debt.
You know, a year ago, I was under the opinion that we were in real sound shape, but today, it's a different picture.
Well, the pension, I mean, and again, I don't want to panic anybody. I mean, it's not like we're, you know, vultures are circling or anything like that. It's not that. I'm just alerting you to areas that need our.
I don't, excuse me, I don't think he's talking about the pension. I think he's talking about.
Overall, cap.
Value of the power plant is probably what he's talking about.
This is year four of that agreement. You know, next year, now, you know, I mean, nobody has to tell you, it's hot outside. And ERCOT is, is, I mean, they're selling every drop of energy they got. And Comanche Peak is part of that. They're selling everything they can gen. So, and the cost per megawatt hour, which is what our appraisal district monitors, you know, it's, it's, that price changes in 15-minute increments. And, and, you know, between 2 and 4 in the afternoons, I bet you that price is probably in excess of 1,000 bucks. And all of that flows through to their average. And so, I'm expecting their value to increase next year when we get to January 1, based upon that.
But it's not a given.
It's not a given.
Yeah, I mean, January 1, price of natural gas goes down, that's all they use, though, isn't it?
No, 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 they use the average. It's that.
That's something I've never heard of before.
We won a lawsuit on that average, right?
That's correct.
And it paid on our side.
That's right. And so, the average.
So, they're using more this year, hopefully?
I really do. You know, there's a couple things.
They should, because it's hotter.
They broke records on that.
It has been.
Every day is another record. Gas, you know, I keep watching the market analysis of that. Gas is ticking up a little bit at a time. You've got a presidential administration that favors nuclear, you know, and so you've got a lot of good things happening for us right now. I'm expecting it to go up. I'm going to be shocked if it doesn't. But I've been shocked before. But I really.
There might be a little bit of discussion and battle, but it shouldn't be like last time.
They've got two big, what's the word I'm looking for? Schedules, the.
Improvements.
Yeah.
Retrofits, rebuilds.
Okay, we, now, they base the value on the energy costs. What percentage do we get out of what they do for its updates?
You know, it's a.
Then they, they.
The depreciation?
Deregulation, what he's trying to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stop that, didn't it?
Well, yes and no. I mean, they still, they still appraise it using the best of three methods. You know, obviously, there's historical costs, you know, and that's unfair to them because it was, it was so expensive to build. Then there's replacement value. Well, that's, that's really, you know, they're not building any new plants, so that's really not a good number to use. So it leaves the last one being the income approach, how profitable it is. And, and so that's why it all keys upon the price of energy. And that's what we all kind of circle around, because that's, that's the most fair for them and fair for us. You know, when the market's down, it affects us. When the market's up, it affects them. And so, you know, that's why I keep watching the energy market, because that's a good precursor of what they're going to be able to generate. Now, obviously, no matter how good the energy market is, if something happens and they're shut down and can't operate for a month or two during the peak times, that's going to have an impact on us. But that hasn't been the case. You know, they've been operating at 100% capacity and basically selling everything they can generate, which if you remember from the trial court, even back then, under oath, the chief financial officer said this plant had sales of in excess of a billion dollars a year with annual profits of over 240 million a year. So, it's a very profitable enterprise.
Right now, aren't they going through some layoffs?
You know, I think some of their contractors are. You know, I, you know, I've heard of some people retiring, taking some early buyouts. But they've got two big operations coming up, one in November and one in February?
April.
April. That they're going to be, you're going to have folks all over this town because of all the contractors they'll be bringing in. Two outages, that's the layout looking for.
Right.
They're replacing generators.
Turban decks.
Turban.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Okay.
But they expect to spend 45 million on each one, which is huge. If they pull off the first one successfully, then they do the second.
It's a good, it's a good commitment for them. I mean, it shows staying power. I mean, you're not going to invest that kind of dollars if you're not sure. So, I like the, I like the message it sends, anyway. So, now, I'm waiting for you guys to tell me what, if you have questions. You can also see I've included the budgets, proposed budgets for both the enterprise funds as well down there. And being the golf course and the expo center. I updated it for the actual cost of their insurance. If you remember, on the earlier version, we had just received a renewal for the insurance. And so, I was able to go back and populate actual insurance costs. The real shocker was the expo center. The expo center had been undervalued in our previous insurance period, and when Tac came through and did their. And when Tac came through and did their, their cost analysis, and so you can see that I've had to raise that number up to thirty-five thousand for property value, property insurance at the expo. Their portion of premium this year was thirty-four and change. So like everything, I'm expecting that bill to go up a little bit. Seems like everything we do, every company we deal with goes up in price every year. So unless there's really any big major modifications, I'm thinking that this budget, the way it looks now, is probably going to be very similar to what the judge will be filing by the thirty-first. And then, as you know, from historically, the statute calls for fifteen days of rest time, if you will, quiet time before this court can actively start talking about it again. So after August fifteenth, we will start having more budget sessions. At that point in time, we'll be taking the judge's proposed that was filed and making modifications to it.
The argument of fighting starts from August fifteenth, September fifteenth.
Correct. And that's when we have to start doing like publication of proposed tax rates. The CAD will be publishing the effective rollback rates, not only for us, but also all the other taxing entities. We'll have to take a record vote on the elected salaries to determine what you want to do, because we have to publish those, and the judge has to send out notices to the elected officials, things of that nature.
No, that's the thing we need to kind of look at. When we did the last salary survey, it put the transfer district clerk and tax assessor at three different levels. Before, they were all the same level. So we just need to look and see why that happened and if there's something there that can be done.
Well, I'm sure that Paul, I can fill you in on those. Just let me know how you want to change that. And then, you know, let us know if you want to schedule another workshop between now and the thirty-first, when this gets filed as the judge has proposed.
The twenty-seventh is already a kid, isn't it?
If y'all want to.
Yeah.
Y'all want to, we will. If you don't, we won't.
It's, you know, it's up to you.
You want to schedule for variety, right?
No, not yet. We're saying...
Yeah, if y'all want to, we will.
Yes, we have one on the twenty-seventh, just as a last, last circle round. But, you know, as far as revenue numbers, I don't see those changing. The only thing that changed would be anything. And, you know, you guys may have some recommendations after you digest this report, certainly. We should make those updates before we file it on thirty-first. Thankfully, the thirty-first isn't on a weekend this year, so we're not having to file it on Friday before or anything like that, so.
So if y'all want, just let's decide now, and then that way we can go ahead and post it tomorrow. So we'll have seven, two hours.
Posting the meeting?
Yes. No, no, yeah. We'll wait until last minute on that.
Yeah. Three o'clock on the thirty-first.
There you go. Michelle says I'm not taking any more paperwork and...
And at that point in time, we'll also put the judge's proposal on the website.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, the problem, they don't read proposed.
No, they don't.
Everybody thinking including the newspaper as the budget.
I don't know if you know, we have a new...
Yes, we met her.
Of course, I haven't met her yet, but...
May be a positive thing.
I don't know whether we need another workshop.
Well, it looked like you got it in line. I don't know what else we're going to, unless something pops up later that we can, that we adjust between now and end of September, but...
Well, I mean, obviously, in August, you know, everything is available to change starting August fifteenth.
And we've done it before, you follow the budget, make changes.
And it changes before we actually vote on it in September.
And we're still going to be in that phase of not spending money before we don't have to. Do you have any insight on what's going to be left over in the present budget?
I'm actually working on that right now, taking our June thirtieth numbers and rolling those forward with where I think we'll be. Be watching your emails this week. I'll send it out to you.
And this doesn't have anything to do with the budget, but Frank's got another air conditioner down, out of that nine thousand, so can we go ahead and use it that's in the text pool to fix that other air conditioner?
It's down.
Sixty-one hundred.
Been down for two months, a major in the main area.
Just a question.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's y'all's call, but yeah, I mean, we got that, we got that nine thousand sitting there, so we can pull it.
Sixty-one hundred.
Is your office is full?
They won't, that won't...
Haven't got done yet.
Wow.
They're working at it, but they...
Where your electric bill should be moved. I don't know if that's what's...
Y'all want to come down and work at the expo for just a day?
No.
I don't even want to in the winter.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's sixty-one hundred to fix it, it's a sixty thousand dollar replacement. They think they can fix it.
Yeah. I'll get a P.O.
I used to see on Three Stooges, a big block of ice with a fan, but that works.
Well, he's tried that, too.
Since it's coming out of text pool, would we need a call, a special manager to move that money out of there to do it?
The clerk can just move it, pay the bills. We'll have it on there.
All right.
I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh.
The treasurer.
Did you say you were going to take it out of the clerk's budget? I didn't hear that.
It sounded like he was saying something like that, didn't he?
We were talking about following the budget before, and Monday, I apologize.
So they decided they want to do it out of the text pool with the nine thousand left and...
We'll have to, we'll have to follow it when we're out of, the way that kind of works is when we're out of subsidy, which we moved sixty-five today, and that leaves ten, I believe, left, general fund subsidy. We'll pull out of text pool, you know, I left that ten there just for, you know...
Getting close.
Emergency.
Yes, sir. And so...
August, September might be a little tough.
If the expo truly runs out of all things, then yeah, we'll definitely have to have a meeting to decide how you want to handle that.
Yeah.
If we're, if text pool is empty and the subsidy is gone, so.
Well, I think it's sixty-one hundred going in fixing that one will step our customer base.
Well, certainly if it's not working. I mean, that's for sure, so, yeah. So the final word as far as one meet Friday, is there a necessity or...
No, I don't see any necessity at this point.
All right, then we will, we're not going to make any changes to it. I mean, what y'all see today is what you'll get on next Tuesday.
The only changes will be the formatting that's required on the cover, disclosures, all that.
All the formalities.
Required by the government code.
Well, it's a good thing that you estimated this other two million dollars coming out of our general revenue. Or we had lots of cutting that we had to do somewhere. But we don't have the money. We don't have the money as far as doing away with that capital list.
Right.
With our obligations. I was going to ask you what it would cost us to cancel the three pickups, but since we've got it covered, we'll go forward.
That's why they're sending a little bit of a bind so much that we spend ahead of time before we even got here with the trucks and the software and the land. So really, we just got ourselves to blame.
And we already bought the radios for them. Remember, that was the blast cord.
Right. And I was supposed to tell you, and I forgot Alan and Dwayne are at the convention or whatever you want to call it, so they couldn't be here today. But I made them aware of what was going on. I made Jeff aware of what was going on. I know Larry talked to Frank. Mark, we've all talked to Mark.
Yeah, I've been talking to Frank, too.
So, oh, have you? Okay, cool. So I guess John can come and discuss with us when it's a Thursday he gets back, has any more discussion, but this is what we'll propose as a next Tuesday.
And will somebody put those, give him...
He should be back in office Friday.
Give him those documents.
Or maybe even Thursday.
I think he's coming back, I heard he's coming back Wednesday.
Yeah, he's supposed to come back Wednesday night, I think, so he may be in here on Thursday. He'll be on Friday.
Well, Paul and talking about how it's fifty degrees, that would certainly make my day better. I mean, that's...
He was going to be back for the twenty-seventh meeting, so I'm sure he'll be in here on Friday.
I'm going to let him know we're not having a twenty-seventh meeting. He may postpone.
For fifty-degree weather, I'm probably...
He may not want to come back. This is all...
Do you need more?
Do what?
Do you think so?
Yeah. Michelle, do you need this, that flimery flap? Do you need it?
No, sir.
You already have it?
No. We don't.
They don't do anything.
Until we get the final...
Okay, so I'll just put in with the weekly.
Well, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we...
Journalist workshop?
Yeah.
There you go.
Journalist workshop. I have a motion, I have a second.
You have a second, Jeff.
I have a second by Don, all in favor. That's four, four, zero against. Thank everyone that's involved. So usually, we're keeping these?